Okay, I think we are all here. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody that's here this evening, staff as well as those in the audience and also welcome those of you that might be watching later on. And first, I'd like to ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, just a couple housekeeping items. First, a friendly reminder to please turn off your cellphones or put them on silent or airplane so they don't disrupt the meeting. And next, I'm going to make some introductions so everybody knows who everyone is. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, Shannon Bruce, thank you. Shannon Bruce. And then we have our city engineer with WSB is Paul Hornby. And then on the end, we have our HR and communications coordinator Cassandra Taber. And then to my right, our city administrator, Mike Barone, finance director Brian Grimm, community development director David Abel, our city attorney with Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our chief of police Paul Falls. So first order is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, we're just looking to add one item from your work session this evening. We had Minnehaha Creek watershed district here to talk about the potential acquisition of a piece of property with the Three Rivers Park district. The direction given at the work session was to add that item to your business and we would be looking for a motion and vote from the city council for the watershed district.
Okay, so we will make that business item number six D, A, B, C, D, yes. Thank you very much. All right. With that, are there any other additions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Shannon made that motion and seconded by Ms. Mortenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we have two special presentations this evening. We're going to start with our financial audit presentation this evening.
Yep, and Madam Mayor and Council, I'll give a brief introduction.
Thank you.
I don't know if Mr. Barone wants to add anything. I got it, okay. So yeah, Dennis Hugabean and Michelle Hoffman are here from our auditing firm Clifton Larson Allen. So instead of going through, I think there's 136 pages in your packet that starts on page three, they're going to give a 15 or so slide PowerPoint that'll highlight basically, I think, our good financial position at the end of 2016 as far as general fund as well as our utility funds. Before I turn over to them, I don't want to forget to thank, I guess, my staff Angie Bow and Don Muchko for the work they did as well as the other department managers and I guess everyone's doing their job makes my job easier. So and they'll let them talk about how well we did financially, right, both, I guess, numbers wise and operationally, but turn it over to them, so.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having us tonight. And we too want to start by thanking the members of the finance staff, Brian Grimm and the team that he works with here in the finance department. And then Mike was kind enough to do an exhibit with us too where we reviewed all the deliverables and review of the audit and kind of put together the PowerPoint. We did add some new things to that. We'll try and point out the new things that we thought you'd find interesting, helpful in your role as oversight on the city. So with that said, we just want to go through the required communications, real brief high level things, you know, as you said, there's 130 some pages of documents, but we're going to do sort of a high level overview of all the different aspects of what you hire us to do. So the required communications, the actual audit results in terms of audit pleadings we're issuing, and then the actual financial results. Michelle's going to walk us through most of that and then wrap up with some other items. So in terms of required communications, just a reminder that an audit can only provide reasonable but not absolute assurance. You can't be out of a risk-based approach and testing based on where we perceive the risks to be to the city. And we think we do that pretty, pretty well, but again, we can't give anything but reasonable assurance. In terms of new accounting policies that we implemented this year, GASB is the governmental accounting standard for it and they had a new, uh, number 72 that was implemented this year related to some additional investment disclosures. It didn't add too much in terms of burdensome requirements and things like that because we were pretty accustomed to what the requirements were by the time we did the audit. Those were implemented pretty easily. In terms of significant accounting estimates that are part of the financial statements, of course, the estimated useful lives is based on estimates, how long things are going to use, you know, the amount of, the amount of time we depreciate and move are based on estimates. The valuation of investments are estimates, posted employment benefits, and then the net pension liability. We talked about that, I think, in the past where this city had to start recognizing its proportionate share of the estimated pension liability related to the PERA type statewide pension plans. And then we received the full cooperation from management, as I said, we very appreciative of all the hard work that you put into the audit. As far as the opinion that we've issued, we once again, we're able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It's a good opinion, we're able to give any governmental entity in Minnesota, so you always want to hear that as council members. Because we're following the requirements, we have to give an opinion on internal controls and glad to report that for 2016, there were no internal control exceptions to be noted. We also perform a Minnesota legal compliance audit based on the guidance put together by the Office of the State Auditor. And as indicated there, there was one contracting, contractors withholding affidavit that was, ministry did discuss it and feel confident that they've got the procedures in place. That's just one of those odd things. Again, the guidance put together by the Office of the State Auditor changes from time to time and there's things that pop in and out and it is not a full, complete list of every state statute that the city has to comply with. So things do come and go and that's just one of those things that it's about as minor as minor gets in terms of legal compliance exceptions. And then because you extended more than 750, expended more than $750,000 of federal funds in 2016, you had to have the single audit and that's using the guidance under uniform guidance, but we had no, no exceptions noted, no material weaknesses to point out to you related to the single audit.
Maybe Dennis, you just want to mention that's, that was with our PFA loan on our water treatment plant. We didn't get 750,000 directly from the federal government. It's because it's, it's federal and state money that flows through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority program.
Yeah, it's passed through the state, but it has originations from the federal government and then it's considered federal funds anytime that you get money from the state that they receive basically from the federal government.
And as we discussed in our exhibit, we think it's really likely that that'll happen one more year.
It'll happen, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
This is the second year, we had one in 2015 as well. All right, I will move on a little bit to some financial results and we'll start with the general fund. You can see this is an unassigned fund balance. We're looking kind of back over the past five years to get a little bit of comparison. But we have the general funds, unassigned fund balance, fund balance in dollar amounts and also percentage of expenditures. And it is the city's policy to keep that above that kind of 50% as far as of operating expenditures. You can see it's just over, just under 60% this year. And that, it did go down a little bit for us percentage wise from prior year, but that was essentially a planned spend, spend, excuse me, as the fund balance, you know, obviously got a little bit on the higher end last year. So that was a planned spend now, but still very healthy fund balance, well within the, you know, city's policy, higher than that goal percentage. This graph, this kind of breakdown of, and hopefully I can see it okay, I should have copied it as well, but the general fund revenues and just as far as kind of what makes up them and you can see it really kind of shows how much the general fund does rely on that property tax revenue. That is about, just over 70% in that dark blue part there. I'll pause here. And the other, the next biggest item is licenses and permits, which you can see starting in 2014, over the past few years, did increase a little bit as, you know, economy keeps kind of getting back to where it was and there's some developments coming in. And so that's where what would increase that license and permits amount. And the only other caper that kind of changed from last year is where the rev, which is intergovernmental, and last year there was some FEMA dollars that had come in as some grant, federal grant that came in about $200,000, which was kind of related to a one-time thing, some damage app that occurred, so that's, you know, went back down again, not something that we would see recurring every year. And here's a very similar graph, but now with general fund expenditures. As you can see, general, general government there makes about a quarter of the expenditures of the general fund and then you have public safety about half. So that's that other, the big, you know, the biggest piece there in the rev. And then we have public works and then kind of some parks and recreation and other, just kind of a really small slice there. All right, this is just a breakdown of kind of where the general fund expenditures occur as far as by category, but overall, it can really consist of the last five years as operations are being pretty steady. And then the next slide is, we're still sticking with the general fund and this just kind of shows the comparison of revenue expenditures and fund balance. And the graph does not start at zero, that's why I found this unbalanced committee looks like it's less than half of expenditures, it's really not. When I first looked at it, I thought something was wrong, but that's why, because it is over that 50% expenditures or unassigned fund balance. And as you, as you can see, revenue expenditures were right about debt even. We even, in our meeting, thought there was an error in the half years because the number you copied twice, but they were, you know, within a few dollars, essentially a few hundred, a hundred dollars each other as far as revenue expenditures in 2016. And there's a note on the bottom, so I did want to point out that that doesn't include any transfers in or out, this is just revenue expenditures of the general fund. So if there were any transfers in or out, and I believe there was a transfer in this year, or out, sorry.
Yeah, we transferred.
$275,000 transfer out, so that would not be reflected here. This is just the actual revenues and expenditures. All right, so now getting into enterprise funds. And you can see from last year to this year, you know, not a whole lot different as far as unrestricted net position, but definitely a slight increase in all three funds. They did all have a positive outcome as far as their operating income. And this is just the, what we call spend, unrestricted or spendable portion. If you were to look at total net position of funds, it increased quite a bit because there was some capital contributions, but that gets put into basically what we call net investment in capital assets. Essentially, it's part of your net position, but it's not spendable. Clearly, you can't spend that, it's in the form of, you know, infrastructure and things like that. So this is kind of what we classify as the spendable piece. So anything capital related as those capital contributions came in would not be reflected here. But all three funds had a positive, positive income or positive. So now we'll look just at the water fund, there's kind of a few different things going on in this graph. The bars, the big bars there are operating revenue and expenditures, so the darker one being the revenue, the lighter one being expenditures. And the two lines we cross are your operating income. And the reason is that we have kind of two of them there is because operating income includes depreciation expense, which is sort of a non-cash item, you're not actually paying anything for that, but it is an expense. So we wanted to show what the operating, basically the operating income is with that amount in there and without it. And in the past, it, the operating income was negative for some enterprise funds when you have that depreciation piece, but then we took it out, you could see that while the actual kind of money coming in and out is positive. These last couple of years or this year actually, even with the depreciation and the operating income ended up positive. So you can see there, it's just above zero even in 2015, even when we include that depreciation, sort of non-cash item in there. And that was due to a couple of things, the rates did go up a little bit and then the usage also went up in the water fund in 2016.
These, these numbers aren't in millions, are they?
What's that?
It's, on the left, it says those are millions, those are actual numbers, that's actually 200,000, right?
Yeah, that should be actual numbers.
Okay.
Oh, weird.
I figured this out.
Yeah. So now we'll take a look at the sewer fund, this is the same graph, but for the sewer fund. So you can see our revenues and expenditures in the bars we crossed over the past five years. Then the operating income again with depreciation and without. And similar to the water fund, in the past, when we had that depreciation note in there, we did actually have a negative operating income, but that's kind of inched up the last couple of years and now actually even with depreciation is a positive operating income amount. And that was due, there was some increased usage in 2016 just with the sewer fund, the rates I believe did not go up, but it was just a little bit of increased usage which helped that one out. And we have the stormwater fund, same graph again, showing revenues and expenditures. Rates did go up for stormwater as did usage and that really bumped that revenue up. You can see last year, the revenue, the dark blue was, you know, less than expenditures actually the last few years and this year for the first time now that dark blue inched above the expenditure amount. So now a good increase there in the operating income line as well.
And just one clarification, those are both flat fees, but when you're referencing usage, that's because we have more people connected and being billed on the system. So that's what.
And then this graph just shows the future debt service of the city for the next five years. We have 2016 actual, you can see how much your actual, you know, payments that were on your outstanding debt issuance since 2016 and then what you have looking forward in the next five years. And this is, you know, as of December 3, 2016, so any debt that has been issued since then or will be issued soon, you know, isn't reflected in these payments necessarily, but kind of a good idea to just take a look at in the next five years, what, you know, what your cash needs are going to be to make those debt payments on any outstanding debt issues of the city. And as you can see, you know, really pretty similar every year, not, no big like spikes or decreases or anything, so kind of really just steady amounts similar to what it was in 2016.
So this is principal and scheduled paydown?
This is a principal.
Or interest and schedule?
Just principal.
Just principal.
Oh, it's, no, it is, yeah, it's, sorry, yeah, it's, yup, it's.
And I think that lived on down, sorry, 2017, the PFA change from water, well, well defined. But it's still really well planned options to be relative.
And this, yeah, so this doesn't go there.
One of the things we've discovered, we looked at our tax rates and I mean, it's just like, it's still to be very favorable in terms of, we've got some different comparisons there in terms of state average in certain communities and things like that. It's not surprising with the tax values in Oren, although there's slower. But compared to everything else, I think it makes a lot of sense. You've done a really good job as a council and leadership to, to maintain a pretty even keel tax structure here in Metris. Looking at it from a different way on the next slide, the amount of taxes raised per capita, that's where those tax rates go a little bit misleading, or the owners lower with the tax values or so much higher to the per, per capita basis, they're raising more money through taxes. So again, I think we added this one, this was a new graph this year, we talked about it at our exhibit and we thought we'd find that helpful in terms of understanding how the difference, different perspective, not just looking at the rate, but looking at how many dollars per raise per capita. So I think that continues to show a very favorable outcome for the city well planned out. And then looking at current expenditures comparison again, you, you accomplish a lot in terms of what you're accomplishing as a growing city. This current expenditure comparison, statewide average, county, things like that, so again, we've had that slide in there before, but it continues to show almost identical to the outcomes if you were to look back to last year, not really changed at all in terms of.
And this one in the tax rate per capita, as is labeled there, it is from 2015, you know, of course, all the audits and things are still being done, so we don't have 2015 information yet. So this is kind of looking back a year, but, but still, you know, good deal, we'll see. Let us correct the date.
And then in terms of upcoming GASB changes, again, the government's standards for issue, GASB statements number 74 and 75, we can see the implementation dates. These are related to OPED benefits as we talked about recently where you had to put on your financial statements, your estimated share of the statewide management plan shortfall for PERA. This is just related to your OPED benefits. So when they originally came out with the guidance to implement the OPED liability for commitments that you're making for future retirees and their share of health insurance benefits and implicit rates up to and things like that, that went on with the GASB thing 45, but again, they gave you like a 30-year period to amortize the, to get the debt onto the books. And now they're saying they really wanted to read it in hindsight, very similar to the pension standard, so they just kind of put it on the books when it, when it's applicable in 2018. So it's just a heads up, it's not a fund of a liability though, just to remember, it's not going to affect the general fund or anything like that, it's just that entity-wide perspective that we created 10 some years ago.
So the amount will go up, the amount is, is on the books currently, but it's sort of part of the amount as it's being phased, it was being phased in over 30 years and now they're saying, okay, you know, we can't, we're not going to phase it in, we're going to actually put the entire amount on. So there is liability already in your books and the government-wide, it will just go up a little bit to really capture the entire amount versus, you know, kind of being in a third way through a phase in.
We did have just a few minor comments to implement as a result of the review comments from the GFO, GFO certificate, excellent program. You did get the award, but there were just a few minor comments to implement. We fully expect that the 2016 award will continue to be awarded based on your application. And then as we said, there was a similar at the form of 2016. So those are the things that we wanted to review with you, but today, if you have any questions or comments, we'd be glad to respond a little bit to this point.
Council, any particular questions? I know it was a very interesting meeting.
And they just keep getting longer every year.
Yeah.
And that is from our, it's true.
I like your graphs, that's very good because you can just, it gives a quick snapshot, you can quickly look at it and see. And I also like the comparisons to the taxes per capita as well as the tax rate. That's good information for us to have, especially going into our budget discussions, probably within the next month or so. So, great, thank you very much for your presentation. Anything else?
I guess if there's no other questions, we'd just like a, a motion from council to rece, that they've received and accepted the 2016 audit.
Right, thank you. So we would, I would like a motion then to accept and receive the audit for 2016.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Mortenson made the motion and Ms. Thol seconded it. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. So we have one more special presentation and this is indeed a special presentation from Ethan Livermore with the Boy Scouts. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us why, why you're here and welcome.
So, Livermore, I'm currently a Boy Scout. I am trying to do my Eagle Scout project. So the agenda is talking a little bit about like the scouting career and why, what it means being Eagle, so how we get it. Then we're going to talk about like the project, like how we're going to do it and stuff that I have, where it's going to go. And for the timeline, we're going to talk about what I've done so far and what I plan to do in the future.
Okay.
So Eagle Scout, one of you, and I'm striving to achieve this Eagle Scout, right? One of the requirements is to plan, develop and give leadership to others in a service project. Through this requirement, I will practice.
Go back one.
First, I have to identify the valuable project manag, management and leadership experience. And another one of the requirements, they have 21 of the merit badges, some of which are required for you to have. This is a little bit about me, I'm currently 13 years old. I live in Troop Creek, Old War, Troop Creek, Illinois. According to my scout master, I'm the youngest scout to achieve life rank in our troop, in the history of our troop. I am a troop foreman, I'm just basically an excell here. I currently have 20 merit badges and I'm trying to get some of those more Eagle requiring merit badges. And I need four more, I'm currently working with three.
Good for you.
So the project detail is the objective is to build a 10 by 12 by two foot, two feet raised planter at entrance to Lyle Park, parking lot. Lyle Park is located in the interior's crest subdivision in the city of Nineteenth Street. The planter bed will contain various plantings and a park sign. So some of the volunteers will be family members, friends, neighbors, Mount Rover Club, if they accept it, will send some manpower and volunteers from my own troop. The estimated cost is around 2,000, plantings of 300, donation is 1250, supplies is around 450. And I'm working to get donations from the Rover Club to cover some of the costs. We will plan to start the construction of the raised planter in late May or early July. Then we will try, we will finish it in one to three months. So this is Lyle Park and then where it was dotted, that's where it's going to be, probably. So the planter will go where the, on the left, where the left I chose and then mark it out a little bit with like the states in the cord. So this is like a picture from the NAR, like a, kind of like a showing it what it, what it probably will look like. So neither some block options that you can choose from, the straight face is recommended, they recommend the straight face. Then for the block color, it doesn't really matter, but I, my, I recommend a smoky blend because that was personally good to me. And neither the, some of the plants we'll add there and the signs.
So you'll add signs with each of the plants then too?
No.
Oh, okay.
So they're the, okay, types of plants we're going to add. Grass, the bushes and then some day leaves. Then this is the timeline that we currently have established. April 27, I met with Nikki and Garrett Lyle Park to discuss some of the, discuss the project. April 28, my dad got a quote from Timberwall, we're auctioning, like 1,000 for all the stones and stuff. And then transferred like some more money if they all transferred themselves. May 9, we received approval from the Parks Commission. On May 13, we, I attended a seminar from Timberwall on how to build, how to build a retaining wall, like what type of foundation you need, that type of stuff. May 14, we checked out the plants at Superior Landscaping to see which ones would be best, what the prices are. And on May 16, we plan to have a meeting with the Rotary Club to present the project for donations.
Great.
That's the end.
That's it.
Any questions?
No, that's, that's wonderful. This is just kind of the project we want, collaboration with the city and, and scouts and the Rotary, so this is wonderful and I'm really glad and pleased that you're coming forward and you're, you're moving forward with this. I think it'll be exciting for you as well as the neighborhood and, and for the city as well, so good, kudos to you. Any questions?
Madam Mayor and Council, one, one thing I just want to add, there is a resolution before you tonight to accept the, the donation of the work, what we commonly do when someone does improvements to a city park. The other thing I just wanted to, to mention, as, as Ethan mentioned, he's going to the Rotary Club to seek some funding. But the other, the other ask I'd like from, from council tonight is, in case that funding for some reason does not come to fruition for Ethan, what he'd also be looking for is us, the city contributing. As you can see, what I would recommend, if you're willing to do that, is maybe a not-to-exceed number, he mentions here, probably would not exceed $2,000. So this most certainly would be improvement we'd be doing anyway at some time in point. We would have to do some sort of landscaping there, so if for some reason the funding weren't to come into fruition for him, they'd be looking to ask you, the council, are you willing to, to give some money to help with the materials for this project? Of course, he'd still be doing all the labor and such, but would need some of that money for the materials, so that'd be something I'd looking for you to discuss as well.
And this could come out of park dedication funds, yeah.
Correct.
And, and we also have a park maintenance fund, a fees and, so, yeah. I can't speak for the Rotary, but I, I'm thinking they, they might very well step up to the plate, but if they don't, if they have other commitments this year, it would be nice to get this done, so. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to, I'm sorry, approve the?
We do have a resolution that accepts the donation, that's in your packet and then...
What page is that on again, I'm sorry?
I can get it, yeah, here. It's got to be around here.
Don't, oh, here it is, okay. Resolution accepting donation of a landscape bed at Lyle Park. So we don't have to designate including not to exceed potential up to $2,000.
You can, you know, yes, I mean, general discussion, if you're okay with it, is, is what we're looking for. The resolution's accepting the donation.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept the donation?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion as of being by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then can I get a motion to allow up, up with a maximum of $2,000 should the funding be needed?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think the time for that might be after he approaches the Rotary, because if he approaches the Rotary and they know that the city is going to fund it, I think, I think the time to approve that would be after he approaches the Rotary.
Except he might want to get started the beginning of June and so then it might have to come back to us and then it might be, be beyond the timeframe.
Okay, well.
I'm pretty sure if they're going to fund it, they're going to fund it. I'm pretty sure if they're gonna fund it, they're gonna fund it, regardless of whether, they're not gonna say, well, the city's gonna fund it, so we don't have to.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be an impediment to, to getting funded.
No, I'm sure that if they're going to fund it, they're gonna fund it. It's, it's not gonna be contingent on whether we're gonna do it or not, but I see your point.
What do you do, like, normal fifty percent? Like, if, if they pitch in a thousand, the city pitch in a thousand, is that?
I, I think they're gonna fund it.
I think they will too.
So.
But I just want, like you said, have a number so that he can proceed without coming back.
Right, and that, that number would be two thousand.
Yeah, so if the city went with fifty percent, I don't know, is that too high? If he can't get the two thousand, would we be able, we, we be willing to kick in a thousand, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm saying if they're not willing to fund it, we should kick in the two thousand.
Otherwise, you'd be missing a thousand.
Oh, okay. I can't imagine that they want to support some of it.
I think he's gonna get the funding, is, is what I'm saying, and, and it has to, it's gonna be done one way or the other. We're gonna, we'd spend money one way or the other. Now, what we're hoping for is that he's gonna get the funding. So, that's what I'm looking for, is a, um, a motion to approve up to a maximum of two thousand dollars for the project, should other outside source funding not be avail, not come to fruition. How about that?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you very much, and looking forward to seeing the project finished. Thank you. So, um, next on our agenda, we have persons to be heard. We didn't have a sign up sheet, um, but I don't see anybody here that's, um, for persons to be heard. So, we'll move on to our consent agenda items, and those are approving our work session meeting minutes from May first, approve our regular meeting minutes from May first, approve, uh, approve our claims, resolution number eighty dash seventeen, and resolution number eighty-one dash seventeen, which is approve the purchase of a tax forfeited lands, resolution approving our step increase for Travis Barrett in Public Works, and a resolution to approve our CUP for accessory building at forty-five seventy-five Marywood Lane.
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item number F for just a brief discussion, please.
Okay, so that, anything else that, otherwise, that's A, B, C, D, and E for approval. Is there a motion to approve A through E?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, and next we have F. Ms. Thor?
Yes, um, uh, I just wanted, uh, the council to have an opportunity to have a little discussion, uh, about this topic. I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but, uh, I was the council member that sat in on the planning commission meeting recently where this, uh, was brought forward, and, um, the, the, from the information that the, the planning commission was given some information, and then during the meeting, an item in that changed. Originally, they, they were thinking of, uh, running water from the street, but then that is just too long and cost prohibitive, so then they decided to, uh, stay with the well. And, um, the, the planning commission was, um, uncertain about what their role was as far as how fine tuned the application should be before it's elevated to the city council. And so, um, because after the planning commission, then the applicant was going to meet with their, um, contractor, and, uh, and then get it fine tuned and bring it forward to the council. So, the decision was made, um, Nick Olson gave the council member, excuse me, the, the planning commission, uh, there are options that they could, uh, ask the applicant to come back to the next planning commission meeting with more of the final plan, then elevate it to the council, um, or to elevate it to the council knowing that, um, one of the, uh, bullet points that the applicant needs to do is, uh, the applicant must obtain all necessary approvals and permits from the city prior to construction. And so then, even if what is elevated to the council isn't final, it would still need to go through, um, Mr. Abel and Mr. Hornby before it was finally approved. So, um, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Hornby or Mr. Abel want to speak to that, or, or?
Um, y- y- yeah, so, he's got exactly right, uh, council, council members. So, the, the plan got changed at the planning commission meeting, and the building actually got smaller as a, as a result of that. So, the, um, the planning commission had to make a decision, what, what do we wanna do in, in, uh, in order to keep things moving? Because the building got smaller, I think that's why they were comfortable with going ahead and forwarding on their recommendation of approval. Um, likely, if it had gotten bigger, I think that would've been different, a different situation. They always said, hold up, we, we need to take a closer look at this, why don't you change your plan and, and bring it back to us? So, um, they went ahead and made their recommendation to, to go ahead and let them revise the plan in between planning commission and council. We've got that revised plan. Um, as you saw in the staff report, there were some, um, comments from, uh, ci- city engineer, which, uh, he's comfortable with the plan. There are some minor, minor things that need to be shown on the survey prior to us issuing a building permit. But again, those are minor items. We're, we're comfortable, uh, as staff, going ahead and along with you, council, to approve this conditional use permit, knowing now the next step is building permit, and that's when we'll ask for these more finite details from the applicant before we're gonna go ahead and issue that building permit.
It's the size. I'm just saying, it's the size that, um, triggered the variance.
Conditional use permit.
Y- yes, exactly, sorry, yeah.
But in, in discussing, uh, this with, uh, Mr. Abel, he said that, uh, it's not uncommon necessarily for some minor tweaks to happen once it's?
Correct, uh, so, yeah, the, uh, discuss, you know, it is not uncommon for plans that you will see at council level to have details somewhat changed by the time it gets to permit to, to us. And, um, as long as the, the box, the box that you guys looked at, that, that outside box square footage doesn't change, we'll go ahead and, and allow for changes.
Or get smaller.
Or get smaller, correct. Um, some, sometimes internally, they'll move things around, or put at a window here, or at a door, or there, there's, there's small minor details like that that will sometimes change. But as long as, you know, the, the square footage isn't getting bigger, like I said, that box, that footprint isn't changing, or if it's getting smaller, you, you're just, uh, having less intense use of, as to what you guys have already approved. So, there's, there is commonly changes or tweaks that are made, but, uh, the, I think the point, and why Ms. Thor wanted to, to bring this up too, uh, is that, you know, this is the plan, this is the size of the building. It, it, you know, it could get smaller, I suppose, if he wanted it to from here, but it can't, he, you know, he can't go back and make it bigger after you guys approve this, this tonight, if, if you were to approve it.
Exactly.
And I didn't wanna waste anybody's time, but I thought that it was an opportunity for all of us to have a better understanding of how that process works. And, you know, Mr. Malitor, having been on the planning commission and, 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 but two of you being new to the council, um, so, so that's the only reason that I pulled it.
Just out of curiosity, why did it get smaller?
It got smaller because, um, he's currently has a septic system. And the original plan was to hook into city sewer. And so, a septic system, he was gonna have to go away, given the size of the building. Because it's so costly to hook into the sewer system, he's gonna keep, he's just gonna stay on septic. So, he had to make the building smaller, I'm sorry, had to make the building smaller, so he didn't encroach on his septic system.
So, it's currently at thirty-eight hundred square feet, right?
The?
The proposed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what was it to begin with? Do you know?
The original square footage of your building?
Uh, I'm, I'm Robert Wallace, and I live in one five three eight two Mason's Point in Eden Prairie. Uh, I plan on moving into this house and selling it in Prairie House. But the size, I think, changed like four times, and it started out the way it is now. And then I had an architect who got into it, and then he made this, but he wanted this bigger, and I don't need it to be bigger. And then, when the, when that came, and then, and the cost of hooking up the city sewers, like, was like fifty grand. I, can I have a question about that? Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Sure.
What, I, you know, towards, you know, going to the west, the city, the sewer line runs that lake level, and then there's like six houses in a row where the sewer line is way up at the top of the hill. How come?
Well, that might be a long, long story.
Well, and that's not uncommon along lake properties. Um, oftentimes, you, through development, as land develops, you end up with sewers in different locations. Some of them along the lakes, some of them up higher. It's not uncommon. I don't know the specific history on how it happened here.
The next one, if, if these, right there, I think there's like six houses, kinda close with the, with the sewers way. If they all join, all join together, would, uh, would the city put a pumping station in for all six of them?
No, probably not. That's a met council.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, I don't, you don't have to answer.
And the, the sewer issue is different from the variance issue, so I wanna kinda keep us on topic.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger.
That's okay, but if you'd like, maybe after the meeting, you can talk with our, um, city engineer.
I can visit with them, but.
Yeah.
But then, anyway, we made the?
It's outside of our, our scope for the, for the resolution.
We, we made the garage smaller, so we would have to set back away from the?
From the septic, yeah.
Septic system.
And you're not planning on using this for a business, right?
No, it's gonna be a, our basic garage storage.
Okay, it's a large garage.
It is a large garage.
All right.
I had a garage at the Autoplex, and I'm thinking, it's a lot of money, you know?
Yeah.
I think I had six hundred and fifty thousand in the Autoplex.
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't need it, I'll use it as far as a garage.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, then. Council, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, what is your pleasure? Approve a CUP for the accessory building at forty, so, um, I'm looking for a motion to approve the CUP for an accessory building at forty-five seventy-five Marywood Lane with the conditions as, uh, listed in your report. So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Thor and seconded by Ms. Bruce. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So, you have your CUP. So, we'll move on. Uh, we don't have any public hearings this evening, and now we will move on to our business items. First is, uh, approve plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for Halsted Drive Improvement Project. This is exciting. We've been working on this for a couple of years.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is a resolution that would, um, if, if approved, would, uh, approve the plans and specification and authorize the advertisement for bids. Uh, the plan has made its, uh, second submittal to MINDOT, that was, uh, today, and, uh, based on some comments we had earlier, so we think that turnaround will go around, be turned around fairly quickly. And another item we'll be looking at a little bit later this evening is, um, acquisition of easements is actually going very well. So, um, we'd like to keep this project on the schedule we presented earlier. We'd like to, um, ask council's authorization to advertise the project for bids.
So, you would do the advertisement as soon as, um, the state gives their approval then?
Well, actually, we, with the ad in the paper, yeah, we can't, we can't open bids until MINDOT approves the plans.
And you're anticipating that to happen Wednesday, so you wouldn't be opening bids before that?
We wouldn't, we have to wait for all the easements to be acquired, 'cause we have to, in our final submittal, we have to make sure the easements are acquired, or that we have the right to, uh, construct on private property along with that. So, we have different agreements for both of those items.
Okay.
But I think the question might be, um, in the bid opening that you're proposing would be on Tuesday, June thirteenth, so we have time between now and then. Is that maybe a question?
That's, yeah, I, I was gonna say that.
So, we, this one is advertised for at least twenty-one days, which we've got built into the schedule.
And, okay. So, June thirteenth, we'd be opening bids, assuming or hoping that all of the easements and/or right of entry are acquired? And if not, then the bids would be opened at the time is, at which those would be acquired then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. But MINDOT would approve it, you're saying, this Wednesday, the plans?
They would, they, they would be, they will turn around comments to us by Wednesday, and I expect that to be very minor.
Okay.
So, I'd expect one more submittal to them, once we have all easements in place, and that would be it.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments?
This, one question, just in, it's more technicality. And within the proposed resolution, item number three, we're putting this timeframe in here on June thirteenth. Do we need to have some contingency language in there saying that, uh, it's gonna happen there, assuming or provided that all assessments or easements are in place?
Well, I think legally, they, they can't do it, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I mean, we're approving the resolution to be legally compliant, do we need to have that language in there?
Ms. Strabey, maybe you wanna?
Madam Mayor, I don't believe it's necessary, because as the city engineer stated, we can't do that. I mean, I think the resolution's fine the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Good question. All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids for the Halsted Drive Street Improvement Project?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Thor. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Okay, so next, we're gonna move on to the temporary easement agreements for Halsted Drive. Mr. Hornby, that's you again, or Mr. Grim?
I can do this. I think I, uh, packaged it together that for everyone, it was a team effort, so.
Okay.
I'll, um, I'll go over this one. Uh, so, uh, this is, uh, page two oh one in the packet is the, uh, the memo. So, as, as we just previously discussed, um, with the Halsted Drive Improvement Project, we need roughly, I think in the memo it says fifteen properties, but we may be down to thirteen with some different, uh, work the engineer, um, has done. So, what, um, you saw in your packet, there's actually, uh, six easements that we had as of late in the day Thursday. So, um, you'll see those are all attached in the package. We have actually came in, um, had two come in today that, um, I handed out to each of the council members. So, it's for, for the, uh, Tollis View property and, um, also the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. Um, on the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, they even waived, um, the fee we have to pay, so we're, we're paying them zero, which is always good. Um, but even some of the other, uh, easements were, were fair, and, and they were paying for temporary easements, so, um, I guess, I don't know if there's much more to, to say. These, the compensation for these related items were in the, in the, uh, claims pack, portion of the, of the packet. So, you saw those earlier there, um, also. So, I guess we would be looking for, um, a motion to approve the resolution that would have the, uh, six easements that are originally in the packet as well as these two other ones, and, um, 'cause I'd hope to have the other five for the June fifth meeting from talking with the, uh, the city engineer, so, and their staffs.
Okay. Any questions?
So, it's, it's, the total is thirteen four plus three hundred, is that?
Correct, correct, that would be, yeah, with the three, the three hundred was the other one that we handed out, correct.
To date, yeah.
Yep.
So, thirteen seven.
Yeah.
So, so far.
Correct.
Yeah.
For the eight, we've basically obtained and got, uh, agreements with so far.
Yeah, so it should say reached agreement of eight of the owners versus six, for a total amount of thirteen seven.
Seven, correct, yep. So, I think they just, yeah, would be looking for a, a motion to approve that, I guess amended resolution or updated, and, um, keep, keep on trucking with this project, so.
Right. Okay.
So moved.
Okay, a motion has been made to authorize payment and approval of the easement agreements for Halsted Drive for, um, eight of the, um, parcels in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to remaining easement agreements out of June fifth.
And speaking of those, Mayor, I just wanna remind the council, and it's certainly your pleasure to have them on as business items in the future, but... to have them on as business items in the future, but as we did last year with the water main project, the first time we brought easement and acquisition stuff to you, we did it as a business item. And then future ones, we stuck on the consent agenda. Now, it's obviously up to you guys, when you see them on the consent agenda, if you want to pull them and talk about them, or if you prefer to have them on the business. It's gonna be more of the same, hopefully just fewer numbered to finish up. But if, and I'll reserve the right, as, as representing staff here, if we feel as if there's enough nuanced stuff in there that it would probably be better on a business item, we will do that. But if they're kind of straightforward, here's the dollar amount, approve them, we would prefer to put them on the consent agenda, but obviously it's your prerogative to-
We, it can always pull. I mean, yeah, we can always pull it if they need.
The idea was here was just give you the update on where we're at, and we've got a few more to go.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, so next, we're looking at the County Road forty-four Lotus Drive Turn Lane Discussion. Mr. Hornby.
Mayor, members of the council, council have previously asked that we take a look at the costs associated with adding turn lanes. I think this is a discussion with the Met Council project that's going to occur in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen in that corridor. And also from some of the discussions the mayor and I were involved with at a HOA meeting last year with the Trillium Development, and some discussion about the traffic and trying to make left turns into the development and also right turns if you're coming from the north. So we went, went out and, we just took a look at, now this is a, this is a concept development type of an estimate, but we looked at adding right turn lanes and left turn lanes, which require the widening of the road through, through that intersection for about, it's about a thousand feet, five hundred feet each way, the intersection. We looked at it as, if it constructed with the Met Council, basically the north half of that intersection could be constructed, at least back to its original condition or existing condition by the Met Council. And then the turn lanes would have to be added and widened. That's what these costs represent. And then widening the road going to the south, so the south, south of the intersection, another five hundred feet. So the estimated cost for that work, for the project, is three hundred and fifty thousand. I have talked to, coordinated with the county, and they're taking a look at, you know, number one, as you mentioned, they, for capital expenditures and capital funds for this time period, they don't have anything dedicated for this project. They were going to take a look at the safety condition of the, of this intersection and see if there were any, if there's a hazard, if there's any safety funds that could be used to maybe help fund it along. I have not heard any, have not received any information back from the county on that yet.
When do you anticipate, do you know when you possibly would hear back?
I would expect to hear something this week.
Okay. Yeah, the problem is Lotus currently isn't heavily trafficked. But it's the anticipation that with Woodland Cove continuing to be built out, that traffic will increase fairly significantly, and that intersection is gonna get busier, both left and right turns and coming out and going in. So question, that intersection is really close to that bridge. Do you have enough room there?
It looks like we have enough room in the bridge area. If not, we'd have to truncate those, those turn lanes.
And then would there be, would you have to purchase property then?
Ideally, it looks like we would have to get in some additional road easement or right-of-way. The estimate we put together doesn't include right-of-way, also does not include any environmental impacts. I think, I didn't look at how close wetlands were, but generally, in today's environmental rules, expansion of the roadway for traffic purposes, you can also purchase credits from the bank, through the Bowser Bank, which we did on Halsted, and so we've applied for, for Halsted. We can do the same with this project.
I have a question. I'm just trying to determine the, the people that asked, how many people have asked for turn lanes? And it just says property owners through the HOA. Who, who is requesting it? How many people have requested it? And how significant of a request is it?
Well, I think two things. One, we as a city and as a council have a responsibility to look at intersections and regardless of who requests it, but I'll get to that. But the thing is, is right now, the county or the Met Council is gonna be reconstructing forty-four. So if we're going to do anything within the next ten years, we should think if we want to do it now. So that's for twenty years or whatever, it, it would be far more costly for them to do a brand-new road, and then for us, five years from now, to decide, oh, well, we should have turn lanes here. So that's, that's the thing that's driving this more so than the request by the residents. The residents were the people that attended the Homeowners Association meeting in Trillium Bay, and there were probably sixty, seventy people?
There's a number of people there.
Maybe, maybe more?
I'd say you're in the ballpark.
Yeah, so somewhere in there, sixty, seventy residents that were seemingly, I would say, everybody was unanimous in wanting it. Their concern is, I don't know if you're familiar with Trillium, but they come out of Trillium onto Lotus, and then they're going to be turning onto forty-four or vice versa. They're gonna be turning onto Lotus to get into Trillium. And their concern is with more and more traffic from Woodland Cove, turning in and out of, onto Lotus, that that intersection is gonna be becoming more congested.
But turning, I live in the nearby vicinity of this intersection, so I'm very familiar with it. I don't, not only do I drive it, but I run that road on, on both sides of it. And I'm familiar with how much traffic is at that intersection at a number, number of times throughout the day. And my experience, it's, it's not a scientific study, but there aren't very many cars that come out of that intersection. When I originally saw this information, I thought that maybe the turn lanes were going to be on County Road forty-four.
Yes, yes.
No, they'd be on Lotus.
No, no, on forty-four.
Why is that not a county expense then?
That's a good question.
Because the only issue, if I could, and then hand it over to Mr. Hornby, making a, well, if you're heading south, making a right turn off of County Road forty-four onto Lotus, you don't need a turn lane. You just turn onto Lotus. If you're going north on County Road forty-four to make a left turn onto Lotus, then, you know, I could see the possibility of needing a turn lane, but I, if it's County Road forty-four, in my opinion, that's the county's expense. And I would still state that I don't, my observation is that there's not enough traffic to warrant that. Although we should, you know, we want to listen to residents' requests, we want to take the future into consideration, but based on the conversations that we've been having on the other roads in Minatrista that need to be repaired, where there is already traffic busy enough to warrant that repair, I think three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is excessive.
Based on this being a county expense, you know, the county could let that jam up for twenty years at that intersection. With their cost participation policy for development, for constructing that for development, they look at that as a city cost, typically. I didn't get into the discussion with their specific policy with this, but they are looking at some of their safety funds, if they have any kind of a hazardous, hazard situation there or any reports of it. So that, that would be the only funding they would offer up for at this point, because they don't have any capital dollars assigned to it. The opportunity is with the Met Council project added now. Once the Met Council project goes in, there'll be a five-year moratorium, and a new excavation within that roadway. So it's now our way to at least till twenty twenty-five.
Well, and the, clarify if I hear you correctly, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar rough estimate does not include right-of-way or any wetlands situations, so that could, it could be north of three fifty easily.
Well, it could be. It just depends how we address that, and I didn't, we didn't take, have enough time to take a look at that thoroughly. So we just took a, this is what we think is going to be a conservative estimate of it, in today's dollars.
Right. Not conservative, not meaning low, meaning somewhat high?
Yes, conservatively high, excuse me.
Does Minatrista have any safety, any records of safety incidents at that intersection?
Mayor and council, to date, I'm not aware of any accidents at that intersection. It's possible there's been a few over the years, but it certainly has not been a recurring issue at all. But I think what we're talking about is the potential for the future, not as it exists today. And that's hard to determine until we start to see those numbers, but.
And then the, the five-year moratorium wouldn't start until the project is complete, so.
Which I estimate is twenty twenty.
Yeah, okay.
We'll be working on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but oftentimes you have punched list and final payment going into twenty twenty. So I, again, conservatively high, I'm saying twenty twenty-five.
So twenty twenty-five is the first time you could potentially do any improvements at that intersection. And at that point, you could have significant more. And the other thing, Lotus is gonna be improved as well, also with the Met Council project, I believe. And that's scheduled for what, twenty twenty?
Well, they kind of pulled that off their agenda right now, because it's not, not needed. And they had other projects that could use that capital. So they haven't come right back and told me when that project is gonna go. So part of those improvements in this intersection will be done on the current project for twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Right.
Just to get the pipes in the ground, so I have to take it up again.
Okay. But eventually Lotus will be improved, and then when that's improved, it's possible that along with Woodland Cove, that it'll, because it connects to Woodland Cove, it connects directly, yep, that it would, the traffic will significantly increase.
And oftentimes, what happens on these transportation agencies, they will look for incident reports at an intersection before they make improvements. And so they look at their warrants or the safety deficiencies before they make improvements. This is something that could be done in the future as well. It could be done, you know, as Woodland Cove builds out even, as you experience additional traffic. So it's, it's another way, it's just, it could be done, that could be beyond twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, it could be. You might see some congestion, some people have been delayed.
It's not the congestion that I'm worried about, it's the rear-end collisions.
Well, that's, people have to pay attention, obviously.
There's people that turn off the roads all along forty-four.
I know.
There are more roads than just Lotus.
Yep.
So I would, I would like to add that as far as there being a five-year moratorium, there are a lot of residents on streets in Minatrista that have been waiting more than five years for their roads to be improved. And three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a road is a very significant amount of money when we look at what we were allocating, or anticipating allocating what we have available in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this one intersection is very significant.
Where would the money come from if, if it were to go forward? Where, I mean, would it come from general tax dollars?
Well, I didn't get into that. I think that's probably more of a finance one. I just, I just looked at what the project cost would be.
But would it qualify for MSA dollars?
On the county system, it may. We can only spend them on county-state aid highways, not on county roads. So we have, I have to make sure I know that definition, if that's a county-state highway or county road.
Okay. Just something to think about.
Yeah, well, and to one of the points that you made, Mr. Hornby, in referencing what Chief Falls said, that it's his understanding that there haven't been any traffic accidents at that intersection in the, you know, recent or past few years, whatever the, the timeframe would be, but it's not on their radar.
This is one of the things that came out from council previously, and asked me the cost of it, so.
Yeah.
That's what I did for your consideration.
Appreciate that.
I think we wanted to find out what the cost would be and who would participate, but I don't necessarily agree with the county's or state's philosophy in terms of, let's wait and see, and let's add up the amount of accidents that have occurred at a, because that's what basically they do, is they, they say, how many incidences have, have occurred at an intersection, and then is it warranted? Well, I know on County Road six and one-ten, they had actually had three deaths at that intersection before they would put a blinking light in. So I mean, so be careful about saying, let's see if it's warranted, because that may be an unsafe situation waiting to happen. So that's all I'm saying. The council doesn't want to move forward. I understand the cost issue here, it's fairly significant, and yes, other things would have to be put on hold. Again, it's kind of like looking at, when we looked at the water, you know, we said, well, is it a good thing to put the water in the road now, or should we wait till later? And we decided not to do it now. So maybe that's another situation where you don't do it now, but who knows? Maybe in five years, we might be rethinking it, and it may cost more, so.
Well, and I certainly agree with the mayor that our, my point of making it our, what affects our dis, well, we don't wait for three people to die at an intersection before we do something about it, but I think that is an extreme case and slightly overstating what this, this intersection has. There's, there's not children crossing to go to school here, they're not, you know. So I, it's my opinion that there's, there's not a safety issue right now. And as I stated previously, we've got a lot of other roads that need repair and residents that have been waiting for many years.
I appreciate doing the work, but I do agree with Patricia. I think we have a lot of other priorities that we need to focus on.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, well, we, we, you know, wanted the numbers, and I think that's a good thing, and so, all right. So we will move on to item number D, and that is, I need a motion. So we had a discussion at a work session with MCWD, and they're looking to work collaboratively with Three Rivers Park District to purchase a property in Minatrista on Six Mile Creek. And they're looking to, for us, to give them some support, not financial, but just to support their efforts, put it that way. So is there a motion to support their, their collaborative work with Three Rivers to purchase the property on Six Mile Creek? So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Thol and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we're gonna move on to our administrative items. First, our city administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I just have a few items to discuss with you. I think late today, I received a copy of the LMCD budget, proposed draft budget for twenty eighteen. I think you all received that too. If you haven't, I did make some copies, so if you'd like a copy, I can certainly hand one out to you, but I would encourage you to look at that. As you know, Mr. Malter's on that board, and I'm sure he can give you some more details about that, but we did get the draft budget for that, from them today. Just report that I did attend the MCMA conference on May three through five up at Grandview Lodge. It was a very good conference. Of the number that I've gone to, I've been to like three or four of them. This is probably the best one I attended. They had some very good speakers. Couple of the topics that they talked about was leading change and trying to create a culture of excellence. They had a speaker do the talk about that, and then they had a former dean of the School of Design, which is the architecture school, and plus a few others, talk about designing communities for the future. And then the other item that I thought was actually very, very interesting was the discussion about Blue Zones. Blue Zones are health and wellness for communities as a whole. And back in two thousand and nine, they selected Albert Lee, Minnesota. So if you go to the Albert City, the Albert Lee website, or if you just go to the Blue Zones website, you can kind of see more and read more about that, but it's kind of a, like I said, overall kind of health and wellness of communities, where they're trying to get people to eat better and not smoke and walk. The tie-in with cities was that when you start doing some of these things, streetscaping, putting in, walking past, community guards like that, there's grant money available. So if you're interested in that, you know, you can kind of work towards those. So if you're interested in that, you know, you can kind of work towards those goals and help kind of offset the cost of, of doing some of this stuff, which overall saves money. But you know, there's an initial downstroke, but it was very good, so I encourage you to take a look at that. And then upcoming on Thursday this week, we have the Knutson mediation. Mr. Malter and Mayor Whalen and I will be attending. So if you haven't received anything, it'll probably be in the next day or so. In fact, we may have a call to set up with you to kind of talk about it. But I'm still talking with the attorney from Kenny Agreement to kind of, to kind of set that up, so. So that's this Thursday, kind of an all-day thing. That's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Tabor.
Yes, mayor, members of the council. I had passed out to you earlier, just so you could see it, it's actually a soft copy document. So when you, when you print it out, it gets very large. So last meeting, we talked about a follow-up newsletter that residents could subscribe to that would allow them to get a synopsis of the resolutions that were passed at the council meetings. This would come out prior to YouTube, which comes out the Friday after every meeting. So this would come out ideally Wednesday-ish, give or take the content of the meeting. It's a larger meeting, it may take me a little bit longer to put together. And then this would come out prior to the minutes, because the minutes obviously have to be approved at the next meeting. So the goal of this is not to replace the minutes, but just to give people a synopsis. So if you take a look at this, you'll see a couple of things happening. First of all, it gives them the date of the actual meeting that we're referencing. These will be archived then on the website, so that people can go back to them if they would like to. You'll see a couple of things when it comes to the synopsis. So for example, the first one from April seventeenth was approving contributions of excess funds. That I just stated, and there isn't necessarily any italicized pieces. If you see something italicized, like you would under the quotes and bids, which is the next piece, that would actually be a live link that would take them to our website for additional information. So really what we would be doing is deciding how much we need to elaborate or how much we don't want to elaborate for people. There is a link on the left for YouTube, so then again, that would be live the Friday after this comes out. It would take them to our Facebook and our Twitter, that would be live. And then also at the very bottom, you see our logo and that would be live as well. That would take them back to our website just in general. So we just want to get people trained to know that when they see our logo, it's live and it takes them to our website. So we did discussing the potential water mains. Even if there isn't something that's being passed, if it's relevant, we'll stick it on there as well. We have a couple of events coming up and then we've got some roadwork updates that are relevant too. So it just gives us a chance to give people an update maybe of things that are coming out of staff items like we're doing right now or council items. If there's something that was attended or something that we want to highlight that's going on, then it gives us the opportunity to do that as well, so.
So we're trying to make those hot links, like in just below the large blue box, that talks about the approved money for courts or tennis courts or whatever it might be. You know, if they see that, I say, oh, I live near there, and they'll click on it and hopefully read about it. So the goal, obviously, is to take the actions that happen at a city council meeting and just get them out in a synopsis form to readers, so.
Great.
Where, where's this, is this going to be on the website or is this?
Yep, it'll be on the website.
It is, so on the front page of the website, people have the opportunity to just sign up for email alerts. And this would then be one of those alerts that they could opt for. So they would have to choose to opt in. Legally, we want to make sure that people are opting in and out and controlling that themselves. So that would just be one of the options. And then we would do a messaging strategy too, so as this goes live, then we'd make sure it was in the news on Facebook, letting people know that there's something additional that they can sign up for. Right now, like I mentioned last time, we're up over eighty to a hundred now. I think the last time, at the last meeting, we were trending seventy to eighty on average. We're in the eighty to a hundred per newsletter option right now. So this would just be another one that people would opt for.
Great.
I like it, I mean, it's nice summary.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Nicely done and I like the, you know, the updates or like the, the roadwork updates or anything like that where they can click on it because if we get phone calls from any residents, instead of us trying to reiterate where it concluded as of the most recent council meeting that discussed that topic, we can, you know, refer people here and then they can get a more accurate summary of where things are at, so. Very nice.
And mayor, council, just one last item, I think you may or may not touch on, but currently, as you mentioned, this will come out before minutes. But eventually what will happen is, you know, in a couple of weeks, you know, if we have our meeting tonight, we have a three-week break between now and our next meeting. Once those meeting minutes do get approved, we'll put a hot link to those minutes on this. So if you're looking back at it and you want to see what actually happened in the minutes, you can.
We don't publish the draft minutes.
No, we don't, we never have, I don't think we ever will.
No, I don't.
We want you to approve the minutes before they go.
Yeah, it would just be something I would go back and add to, to an archive document. And that way, if people go back to it months later, they have that link as well. Just resources and trying to get people connected to resources in a one-stop, so that they're getting round robin to whatever it is that they're looking for.
Thank you, exciting, good news. All adds to our outreach program, of course, and also just makes us more transparent as well, so, good thing. Are there any other staff reports? I don't think so, okay. So I have a couple of things, one, I think these were all in their mailboxes, the annual report. So if you didn't get it, please make sure you pick it up on your way out. This is the annual Minatrista Public Safety Department report. I was, Mike Barone and myself and the mayor from St. Bonnie had our quarterly public safety committee meeting and I reviewed this, but what I said at the meeting, and I think this would be a good idea, is I'd certainly like for Chief Falls, maybe at under special presentations, if you, if we have time, maybe in June, to actually kind of give us a five-minute or ten-minute overview of public safety and what had, what occurred last year, kind of give us this report. I think it would be good for the public also to know that.
Sure, absolutely, mayor and council, I'd be happy to give a, I guess, a brief summary, there's a lot of information there, absolutely.
Okay, that's great, looking forward to that. We also talked about the training session that's coming up on Wednesday, next week, the twenty-fourth. So hopefully you're all signed up, I know you can't make it, but, and it's going to be between St. Bonnie and Minatrista. So it'll, I know you and I were at the training and some of us have gone to training before. This is going to be a little different, it's going to be more for our cities, if you will.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. It's going to be, there will be some overview, just to set some, some background, but it'll be certainly much more focused on us locally and then what does our situation look like in the event we have an emergency, so.
Thank you, thanks, so that'll be interesting. Also, the other thing is, I've spoken with staff regarding the recognition for our steering committee and we thought we would do that in June, I believe. So we're going to do that in June, recognizing our steering committee people and maybe even inviting parks and planning staff, you can think about that and work that out. So that's going to be happening. One of the things, so I was at the Regional Council of Mayors meeting on May eighth and the topic was sustainable cities. And we had a number of speakers, very interesting, and it really ties in with a lot of things. A blue city or blue spot, as, as Mr. Barone was mentioning. I just got our Minnesota Cities magazine here and it says climate smart cities. It seems like a lot of cities are looking at sustainability and livability and so on. One of the things they brought up was called a green star city. And there's a lot of cities in our, in our area here that are green star cities. It doesn't take a lot, it doesn't cost a lot. And so I'd like to ask if staff would look into that, it's through the MPCA, I believe. And you could bring that back and just tell us what it, give us a little background as to what it is, what it would cost or what it would entail becoming a green star city. I think it's always good to be environmentally friendly, especially if there's not a lot of costs involved. But it could be things that we might be able to do very inexpensively to make our city a better city to live. The other thing I did, I attended the Northwest League and our speaker for that was Commissioner Jan Callison. Although, although she doesn't represent our area, she is the chair of the board. And so that's why we invited her and she brought a whole packet of very inform, very good and interesting information in terms of what the county is all about and what their budget does and where they spend their money and so on. And then I also had a meeting with MCWD and then also I attended the Gillespie Board Meeting. Just kind of a few quick things. They are going to be having an open house on June tenth, they're inviting the public in and showing the people what the facilities is and also just telling them about the events and festivities, activities that they do. They're also going to be starting their Allen Alma Lunch Cruises. They will be on Mondays from eleven-thirty to one, tickets go on sale May second, already have gone on sale. And the cruises are June nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, the twenty-fourth, July thirty-first, August seventh and August fourteenth. So if anybody is interested, you can participate. There's a lot of other activities going on, I won't go through all of them. They will have a booth here at Trista Day, that's the other thing I wanted to mention. This Saturday, I believe, is Trista Day and I'm sure Pam will talk about the pig races a little more. And then we will also be having a personnel committee meeting on Friday, talking about public works and some other things. So we're excited about getting full staff again in public works, a lot of things happening, so. That's it for me.
Okay, great. Well, I've heard about the, the Blue Zones for cities, but not the Green Stars, so it'll be interesting to see. Just, you know, anything we can do to improve our environment or our city or our residents' health and all of that, it'll be interesting. I attended, attended the planning commission, as you know, then we had some additional discussion about that one item. And then I've got the personnel committee meeting this Friday and the training session that a number of us will be attending with St. Bonnie. So look forward to that as well.
I attended the WCC meeting on the eleventh and it was hosted at Burl Oaks and it was lovely. The Burl Oaks Clubhouse manager, Steph, did a quick presentation and I did not know this. You can sign up for social membership, which is really nice. You just can use the clubhouse and you do not need to be a member. So I attended there for Members Day and it was really nice, so, what else?
And that's a business in Minatrista.
Yes.
Which we don't have many of.
Exactly, oh, and I invited everybody for the bus tour, so, and I got a couple people signing up.
Great.
The pig races, all the final details are being done, the name the pig contests are in, we have five winners. The red team is the American Pride. The black team is going to be called the Grease Lightning. Orange is Albert Ein Swine. And these are really cute. The blue is the Flapjacks and the yellow is Sunshine Swines. Anyways, all these people that submitted these will be getting a prize. The color contest, I haven't seen, but there are three winners and they are all getting gift cards, ten-dollar gift cards from Dairy Queen in Navarre. We have nineteen total sponsors and they're all on here. And thank you to our engineer and our attorney firm over there, along with many, many others, so that was great. Yes, and we are going to have nice weather. Yes, and the Parks Committee, Commission meeting, I attended that on the ninth. We swore in the alternate, Sarah Hussein, is that how you pronounce her name? So, and she actually was able to participate because we were short a member.
Very good.
The, it was Scott that was here today, Ethan, did his presentation and they were very impressed with him as well. And then we had an interesting presentation by a developer that is a Minatrista resident named Jeff Martinal. And he is, he has property and he's held this for, I think, fifteen to twenty years and he's.
On County Road nineteen.
Nineteen years?
No, the, his property is on County Road nineteen, I think.
Oh, it is, and he is looking at developing a fourteen-unit lot that will house villas. And it will be geared towards an older clientele with like single level floor plans. In lieu of all of that gearing towards that age, there will be no need for a park. So the Parks Commission did make a motion that recommended that the city council require cash in lieu of land in the sum of eleven percent of the equivalent market value of the property. So that was all good and it kind of goes right in with our steering committee, our comp plan.
Absolutely.
Is that, was that part of, was potentially being re-designated for density?
Yes, I believe that was, it's right over by.
I know where it is.
It's right by Red Oak.
So the plan is, it's conceptual review right now, it's just in sketch phase. And as, no, he does not, density-wise right now, he, he would meet the density requirements. And he, but even with the change, as, so speaking to the comp plan specifically, actually if, if the comp plan goes forward as presented right now, it would, he would, it would increase his density potentially in this area, it, it could potentially go up. Or, and it could get lower too, because that's the flexibility that you guys are doing is if, to go down to a one-acre lot, he could do that, but he also could go up. Right now, he's at a max of three-point-five, I believe, with the comp plan as proposed, he could go up to four.
Is that adjacent to Woods Asagail?
It is not.
Okay, so he has, there's one parcel between?
No, there's several. He's, he's directly south of the entrance to Red Oak, the first property.
He's up on the hill?
Yeah.
It's up on the hill, there's like a blue house or something, I think it's a blue house.
So there's probably one house between him and Woods Asagail?
No, there's, and you got the corner of Grandview, he, he's ways from Woods Asagail.
He's like diagonally, you know, you'd have to go diagonally to get to Asagail. Yeah, yeah, right. It's close, but not that close, or he'd have to.
I think a park demands, to the extent that there is some, it would be on Asagail.
Yes, right, right. But that'll come to us for sketch.
Yep.
Yeah. It's not, how many acres is it, it's probably only about five acres, four, five, yeah, that's what I was going to say, okay, all right.
That's it.
Yep.
I actually went on a tour of Met Council West Water Facility last week.
Oh, yeah, that's so fun, isn't it?
It's actually very interesting, blue water.
Yep, I was there last year, it is.
Very interesting, actually, what, how they process. Now they have solar panels up, I don't know if that was there when you were there.
No, they were going to do it, yeah.
So that's in place now, so interesting. LMCD, as Mr. Barone mentioned, the budget will be coming around, or as actually said. One of the things we talked about is, is social host ordinance on the lake. I don't know, do we have one here in the city?
We do not.
Okay. Social host ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not a bad idea.
Right, I want to get a little bit of feedback from all of you.
I know several cities have it and we've had that discussion, we actually had the discussion at one of my mayor's meetings.
Yeah, and it, right now, it's been on the agenda at least three times and it's somewhat, I wouldn't say split, but it's not unanimous right now. And so my initial thought was, I think it's probably a good idea, but I did want to get feedback from all of you. Social host is, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of experts on this, but on the lake, it's a little bit different, but in, in general is that it's geared towards minor, minor consumption. And it, rather than just targeting the minors who are consuming, it also puts some responsibility on.
On the parents.
And the parents.
This was something brought up before.
Right, to, that allowed, that enabled the type of behavior. And it becomes an issue on Lake Monahaka because people get out in boats and the kids are gone and, and people tie up and the sheriff needs to have an ordinance to be able to not sort, but also as part of their enforcement efforts to use that in addition to underage consumption and other legal tools they have. So I just want to make sure that I'm representing the city fairly by saying that we think that that's probably a good idea.
I think we, we could look at it. I think we, we could look at it. It won't be immediate, but I think we should. Have the chief bring back some information on it.
We don't have to do anything as a city, I mean, we can do our own thing for social host if we want to do.
Oh, okay.
But what we're asked, what L M C D is.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Our, our social host, if we did one, would be obviously within the confines of the city of Minatrista.
Right.
This would look at the lake. So all fourteen cities, it doesn't go beyond the boundaries of the lake. So just because L M C D would force, enable it, doesn't mean it would happen in the city, but it's within the lake. So it's kind of a jurisdiction.
Right.
I, I would need more information before. I, I, it sounds like I would be, you know, supportive of it, but I need more information. Does it affect, who does it apply to? The homeowners on the lake? Or someone that, their, their boat is out on their lake, and their, their, their child has taken the boat out with all their friends, and they're all drinking, and they get in a boat accident, then the accountability is on the, the parent that maybe didn't even know that the boat got taken out.
Maybe Paul, Chief, maybe you could weigh in a little bit.
Or other people that don't even live in the area, but they're just out on the bay, on the lake recreating?
Mayor and Council will be happy to comment on that briefly. So social host ordinances have been around for, for some time. There are a few cities close to us, Orono is one of them, that has one, has adopted a social host ordinance. And they've, they've kind of met with, city councils generally either like them or they don't. And so it typically has been something that has come out of need. If you've had a lot of issues with this, then typically they'll, they get adopted in those cities. And so fortunately, we, this hasn't been a big issue, although I, I personally am a fan of them. I think it, essentially what it does is allows you to, as, as Council Member Malder said, go after the people that allow these situations to happen, because the burden of proof is pretty high under a standard city ordinance or even state statute, to prove that someone's providing an environmental alcohol to minors. And so social host really makes that a lot easier. And so the diff, the difference here is, the, currently, the Hanipah County Water Patrol has jurisdiction on the water, so anything that occurs on the water falls under their jurisdiction. Certainly, if they were unavailable, could we find a way to get out there and deal with it? Yes, but for the most part, that's why they're looking at having a separate ordinance, because it's very specific to activities that occur on Lake Minnetaka. So that would be completely separate from anything that occurs here in Minatrista on the land. So if there were two ordinances, they'd probably be very similar, but they would be enforced by different people and in different manners. The issues are different, so, does that answer your question?
To some degree, yeah. My, my, where it gets gray for me is, you know, certainly I'm not, not, don't approve, you know, minors or, or anyone endangering anybody, whether, you know, on the lake or on the land. But to what I was saying before, if you have a minor child and they take, you know, maybe you're out of town, maybe you're not, they take the boat out with some of their friends.
The social host ordinances.
And you didn't provide the liquor. They got it from, you know, some brother that's of age, and then something happens, you know, does the accountability lie on the parent of the one that was, that owns the boat, or?
Right, I think to briefly answer your question, this is really designed to go after those people that are kind of nonchalantly providing an atmosphere, or, or probably should know that they're providing an atmosphere. Typically, it's, it's people that are just knowingly doing this. So it isn't meant to just hold someone responsible that had no knowledge of or intent. That's certainly not the, the purpose of it. So I'd be happy to bring back a lot more information. I can bring back some sample social host ordinances, if you'd like, if you're interested in seeing that at a later date.
We can look at that later. I think what Mr. Malder is looking for is some kind of, a nod of approval, if you will, from the councils, that, yeah, we're interested in that type of, an ordinance for the water.
Right.
And, and you know, and I know it's going to be a little more challenging, obviously, to write a social host ordinance for the water.
Right.
But, you know, we can leave that up to, to the L M C D and their discretion.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting for the city, I'm just looking for, and I'm, I'm seeing nods, so. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. And your point is, is there's a lot of, if you, if you want to see it, the actual language, you can go to the L M C D website, lmcd.org, and look at Agenda, and you'll see all of the language. Just like our packets, they have packets just like ours, so if you want to take a look. There's a lot of, you know, reasonableness, wording around reasonableness to, to the chief's point about, you know, it's not a cut and dry, but it's, it's just, and it's not a, as you mentioned, it's not a tool that you're going to go out there and aggressively enforce. It's just another tool to help situations that arise, so. And with that, that's all I have.
That's all, okay. And Ms. Bruce?
Yes, I found myself on the Budget Committee for the Pioneer Service.
I did that. I'll have to talk to you about that.
Eight o'clock Thursday morning, that's what I was doing. So Tom Cook from Greenfield and I are on the Budget Committee.
Oh, yeah.
And despite the staff recommending a one-point-two-five increase in the budget, we decided ultimately on decreasing the budget by six percent, because they've been building a surplus over the last many years, seven or eight years, to fund projects, which are, you know, there's money to fund projects, and we're looking at Whaletail, South Whaletail, as one of them. But as a result of that, Minatrista's assessment is going to go down by about nine-hundred dollars for twenties next year.
But the, but the monies that have been set aside for the CIP projects should be used for CIP projects and not for running the organization.
Yes, and one of the, one of the cuts that we made in the budget was administrative costs, because they're heavily weighted, their administrative costs are, are high.
Their administrative costs are high percentage-wise, because they're not, they're not levying a lot for their capital improvement projects. And that's, that's the reason.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if, if you were to leverage more for capital improvement projects and actually get more projects done, then their administrative costs would, wouldn't be so high, percentage-wise.
Right. But there's, this, the budget is going back to Pioneer Sarah Creek Board on Thursday this week, and that's the same night as St. Bonnie fire that I'm on, so I'm not going to be able to go to that meeting.
Okay.
And I, I've looked for some proxies, but haven't been able to find any, if anyone's interested in going to Pioneer Sarah Creek.
They couldn't vote on it anyway, other than if it were Pam?
Oh, they couldn't?
No, because you have to be, by, it has to be by a motion that you are assigned as the commissioner. So, yeah, the only other person that could vote, that could go and vote would be Ms. Mortenson.
Okay. One thing that they are interested in is asking cities if they have a manure management ordinance, and they'd like us to look at doing something. And there are model ordinances that other cities have, that don't put a lot of burden on current hobby farms and things like that, so we might want to take a look at that in the near future.
I could make a joke about manure management in City Hall, though.
That's all I have.
Okay. Sounds like that would be something to look into, though, especially how we're talking about Halsted Bay and, and that project, and.
Okay. With that, I think we have concluded all of our items on our agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Malder to adjourn. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, five-oh.